Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and it's seven oh four, and I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Dambrosio. Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Mosib.
Here.
Trustee Petrikov.
Here.
Trustee Thorp.
Here.
Trustee Watts. Here. Chair Barry.
Here. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for the following Board of Trustees Meeting. Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Regular Board of Trustees Meeting, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Recommended action: Make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So move.
Support.
We have a motion moved by trustee Petrikov, supported by trustee McDonald. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing on, please attaching unanimous vote in affirmative. Next item, please.
Student Presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Nealan. I'm the Vice President for Academic Affairs, and I want to be able to introduce some special people who are making their way to the front right now. Five of the last six years, this college has brought home first prize in some of the art and design competitions that are sponsored annually and statewide by the Local Area Network for Development, or LAND. This year, like the years in the past, we came home with numerous awards. These range from painting and sculpture, to scholarly writings, to poetry, and to prose writings. They can extend into the area of music, and in terms of art, to graphic art as well. I want to be able to just start by thanking and introducing my colleague, Vicky Shepherd, who runs our graphic arts program here at the college, and who will introduce some of this year's award-winning students and their art.
Hello, I'm Vicky Shepherd. I am the Digital and Graphic Arts Lead Instructor. We have, I have a list of the LAND winners. I don't see Susan or Steve here, so I think I will just sort of list those first, and then we'll go into the students who are going to talk. So for two, two thousand and twenty-four LAND, this was out of our graphic design department. We had, first place was Destiny Little, second is Zainab Sleman, Sleman. Third place was Zara Alkaram, and then fourth place, or honorable mention is Fala Abdan Nur. You have to pardon me, I know all my students by first name basis, and then I have to look up, what's your last name again? But, okay. So studio art, which is different than us, that's the fine arts. They had a couple of winners as well, so they're 2D, 2D media. First place was Malik Cherry. It was from a directed studies painting class. I think her work is hanging in the hallway, too. If you haven't seen, I think it's been at the, it's been, I think it might have been shown at the museum in town, so. And then third place, or 3D, first place in 3D was Victoria George for ceramics. And then Media Communications, also this year, they LAND opened it up to videos, and so we had, they have taken both fiction, and I believe nonfiction. So first place was written and directed by Tracy Leon, with Christopher Lee, Drew Witter, Ruben Saladgudde, Dominic Thomas, and Josh Thayer. And then they placed second for nonfiction, and that was written and directed by Thomas Conlin, with Montreal Morgan Noah Stenberg, Grace Russell, and Eric Stockman. And then they had third place as well, and that one was Anil Kuzokex, Vincent Paulino, Darcy Pastor, and Blake Drumright. And, I'm sorry, that was first, second, and third for all of the fiction. Nonfiction, they also took first, second, and third. One was Luke Gilpin was first place, second place was Kara Hurley, and third place was Maya Mustafa. So, we did really well. I do have prints, if anybody wants to look at them. I'm going to leave them here, and I'm going to introduce you to Zainab and Fala, and they will come up and show you theirs, and talk a little bit about what they did.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fala Abdan Nur, and I'd like to start off with saying how honored I am to have been awarded by LAND and to have been asked to speak about it tonight. So to put it simply, the word undeterred for this year's theme had spoke to me on a personal level, and it had made this assignment or this submission more than that. It had made it like more than something that was going to be graded or judged. It became a testament to what I've been through and how I've continued to pursue my goals and to overcome challenges as a graphic design student, which is why I use myself, along with all of my work from when I first started here at Henry Ford College, as my subject, to prove to myself that my perseverance was stronger than my doubt. And so I'd like to thank all of my professors in the art department that has helped me hone in on my skills and introduced me to these opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Zainab.
Hello, my name is Zainab Sleman, and I'm currently looking towards my associate's degree in graphic design. And the reason for my undeterred winning award from the LAND competition, I decided to go for something that a lot of adults can relate to, like as in work, school, home, like kids, you go home to feed every day. I just wanted to make it sort of like something that adults can relate to in terms of like balancing what work, home, and school. And I hope that, that it kind of gives the, the, the hope, or more of sense, the, the kind of feeling of how it feels to be trapped inside and balancing life between work and your kids or family. Thank you.
Great.
So I can think just really quickly, the names aren't on there, so if you guys want to point out yours. But just to put context to it, it's from our typography class, and this is an assignment where they're blending imagery with typography. So the two are integrated.
First of all, congratulations to all. You did a great job. Thank you very much. Trustee Watts?
Okay, so which, trustees, if you can turn their artwork around to find out whose artwork is he?
Mine is the one right there at the end.
Okay, so trustee Thorp, and then...
Mine is the one at the end.
Trustee McDonald.
Okay, can everyone else put the other ones down? Okay. The, just the ones that they have. Okay. So what was your inspiration for yours?
As I said, my inspiration was how undeterred was a word that I felt personally to myself, and how as a student here, I felt that I was able to overcome challenges and I was able to keep pursuing my goals, even though at times I felt like I doubted myself. But to use my artwork from when I first started to now, it was more of a statement to myself and to the LAND judges that I was able to persevere and I was able to, you know, accomplish my design goals.
So thank you for sharing that, because I noticed when, so we met before, and I know you were nervous, and I noticed that when you were reading from your phone, it was, I got one sense of you, but when you just described your artwork, you came up, you, I felt like the nerves were no longer there. So some of that experience you were saying, was that overcoming some fears that you had internally, or that you felt like that you didn't necessarily, I think you had mentioned something there that I wanted to go back to. Was it your self-doubt?
Yeah.
Do you still have that?
Honestly, maybe before walking in this room, and now that I've done this speech, I feel a lot more confident.
Are you okay now? I said like eye contact with me if you're feeling nervous, and I saw that, so.
Yeah, like, it's just, to be here now and to have been asked to be here, it has really, it helps diminish all the self-doubt that I've, I have felt before and that I have felt before, so this is a great opportunity, and I thank you all for inviting me.
Well, I'm glad that you came. And then, if you could tell us about your artwork, if we can lift it up. Who had to make?
This one.
Yeah.
Because I want to make sure that you have a chance to explain yours.
I have, I had inspiration from my own parents for this one. My mom is a working principal.
Is your mom here?
No, unfortunately not. She, she just reminds me of how she could, like, she worked so hard to get so far in her career, and her balancing university and having kids. And I just thought maybe that she would, she was very proud of me when she saw this, because I told her it reminded me a lot like her. And I just, I'm just very proud to have her as a mother.
What, where does she, where she went to?
She's at George Academy.
Where's that?
Uh, it's on, it's right next to Star International. It's like a little elementary school.
So she was the model?
She was my role model growing up, yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
I just wanted to say that I'm really proud of these students, because they're both a little quiet, but they're both very determined, and when they need to step up, they do. And so I am just really glad they came tonight, and they're just terrific students. I've known them for two years, and I am going to be sad to see them graduate in May.
Hold on one second, hold on.
Oh, yeah, well, ladies.
Not getting off that easy, yeah. All of us, we're all proud of these two students, and trust me, the first time I spoke in front of an audience, I just froze up, so, I thank you, Dr. Watts.
Oh, no.
I'm proud of myself. Thank you trustee Watts for bringing the passion that they have here. I mean, I could see your faces just lit up and smiles and everything that you were talking, so thank you. Trustee Mosib?
I just had questions about your future endeavors. Where are you planning to go?
Um, well, I plan, I have been applying for internships to gain more experience, and maybe to start off with freelance work, and then try to get hired by like an industry or such, but I do plan on continuing the graphic design and practicing more of the skills that I've learned from my professors here at Henry Ford College.
I plan to hopefully transfer over after this next semester, and I hope to find some sort of part-time job in my field.
Trustee McDonald?
One other quick question. Between the both of you, would you share what, in say, ten years from now, would be your dream job?
Well, um...
I put you on the spot a little bit.
Well, I would, I would want to be like a senior art director. I would want to keep pursuing this, because I'm really passionate about this, and to just reach a real, like, advanced level where I'm just absolutely just great at what I do and enjoy doing it every day, so maybe a senior art director.
Wonderful.
I kind of want to start working in the marketing team for graphic design, designers, just altogether, because I feel like I work better in like a group setting where everyone's cooperating, and just been my passion personally, and it's just, it's always been a part of me.
Great, great, thank you. Anybody else?
Swishes, thank you.
Thank you very much, again. Proud of you.
I just, I just wanted to say to both of you that, you know, some of us speak very well, and that's the way we prefer to communicate, but some of us, like you and me, we can speak through images, we can speak through what you do, even with words inside of images, like you did here, we can speak through our music, and we can sometimes say things that way that other people just will never be able to say, talking to a microphone. So don't, don't beat yourself up on, you did great today, but your art speaks volumes, and it reminds us all two things really quickly, that we put a premium on critical thinking. We can't neglect how important creative thinking is. We put a premium on literacies that we define as reading, or writing, or arithmetic, but visual, when we look at, at visual literacy today, more impact happens in our lives when people put an image together with just a few words, and as you said, either sell a million Xs, or can actually get people to behave in certain ways. And I think in higher education, we need to start looking at those important aspects that are oftentimes missing in our general education. So thank you both for reminding us, and thank you, Professor Shepherd, for your work, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, president's items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman and trustees, welcome back to Henry Ford College. It's good to have you back. Last time we were here, we had photographs, and we're working on getting the next rendition in the wall right outside this room, where we have what I call the team photo, and I'm excited about that, so stand by for that. As you probably have seen, some of our students today are very likely maybe celebrating the holy month of Ramadan, and for those of you on our board, our teammates, and my colleagues who are at the college, I wish you a healthy and happy Ramadan Mubarak. And I will tell you, when I was at a public setting very recently, Chair Barry mentioned that trustee Thorp had tried on fasting for a day to see how that went, and, and so I decided to try that. So I am looking forward to seven forty-three today. I'm not, I'm not doing it completely religiously appropriately, I've had coffee and water today, but I'm, I'm interested at seven forty-three to let my friends on this board be able to leave and hopefully have a nice iftar. And for those of you who are celebrating Ramadan, I hope you're enjoying the time that brings you closer to your faith and your family, and certainly after sundown, it brings you closer to good food. And I want you to know that we continue to evaluate ways that the college can both identify those of you who are celebrating this time of reflection, but also helping those that aren't understand and learn from the diversity that your culture brings. Second, I want to brag a little bit about what Michael Nealan and Rhonda DeLonge, and many others, but mostly those two have accomplished, which is now our fourth Learn Forward Agreement. I was able to give an interview with a news WDIV this evening. They tell me it will air at about six AM tomorrow, and it talks about one more option our trustees have once they graduate, to not wonder whether they belong to the guaranteed admission program that also will give them all sixty credits. You know, it, it just, I have to say, it's, it's the best in the state, and no one repeats, but here it is now, the fourth university that's invested in us, and it would not have happened without your teammates at the college, particularly Dr. Nealan, and then Vice President DeLonge, who's been pushing really hard to try and get more and more press out of this, which is difficult, because remember, we've been doing this now for more than a year, and sometimes people will say, oh, that's an old story, but a new university, and the only old part of it is HFC is now getting another, another partner, so I'm really excited about that. If you do want to take part in the announcement, we're going to be doing that at Eastern Michigan University's Welch Hall tomorrow at ten AM, and so hopefully get a little more press then. But we'll be with the leadership of Eastern Michigan University, and this time, the mascots work out great, so we can have hawks traveling to Ypsilanti to become eagles. Maybe we can have some of our students show us an interpretive graphic design about how that metamorphosis happened. I, I was looking at the work that you ladies did, and I thought, I wonder if they could figure out a way to make a hawk transfer into an eagle. So I'm really excited about that, and I just, again, I'll just repeat, because it's fun for me to repeat that. Michael, congratulations, you've done great work. Rhonda, you've done fantastic, fantastic work. Nobody else in the state has been able to accomplish this. I have a few things that I would describe as housekeeping. One is, I was with you all trustees in your other role last week with Dr. Malako, and I heard a lot of discussion about, in fact, a pretty lengthy presentation and discussion about some high school students choosing to move their high school of choice from one of the three high schools that you all supervise to online providers, and Henry Ford College came up in that discussion several times, and so what I want you all trustees to know is, I'm, I'm looking into that, I'll be talking further with Dr. Malako, because I could hear that at least some of the questions were sent it around, if, if HFC is at all implicated or in part of this process, that, I know you're all watching very closely with the P-12. So I don't have any answers for you on any of, in fact, that was all interesting and new to me, as we discussed it last week, but I wanted you to know it's on my radar, and I'll be meeting with my team and Dr. Malako, hopefully in the coming weeks, to get more information for you about that. Two days from now, at seven thirty, we'll be having the collage concert, and we're excited about that. I invite any of you all to come. It's a great way for us to showcase both our talents and what we deliver to the community in another way of cultural expression. If you haven't been to the collage concert, please do come check it out. It's, it's a wonderful show, an ensemble in our Dearborn Performing Arts Center, and this year it'll be led and organized by our own Anthony Lai, who's here, and that's a nice transition to another thing, Mr. Chairman. You have action items that have some votes on personnel, and so depending on the results of your action items, I may ask for a brief opportunity to make a note after your action items. I, I saw the student presentation today, and thank you for being here, students. I just want to say to Vicky Shepherd, I don't know if she's still here. Trustees, I don't know if you've had a chance to meet Vicky Shepherd, the faculty member who accompanied the students to the podium, but she's just another example of someone I'm really proud to work with. She cares deeply about students, she works mostly not in the spotlight, and her, her curriculum is not a high enrollment curriculum, and often times it is students who are, as you heard today, contemplating with the intersection of their developing views of their own future, jobs, what they should do, and unlike those that are, I want to be a doctor and I'm going to take, or I, I think I'm going to be an engineer, shoulder to the oar, and that's what I'm saying, for, is a shoulder to the, to the plow, or hands on the oar, we're from collective bargaining. And AFT sixteen fifty is led by Eric Rader, who did a great job. He told me he won't be able to make it tonight, but he's got no better stand-in than Sam Bazey, who's in the back, who literally was my chauffeur around this town, both physically and emotionally, helping me connect with the communities that mostly were in mosques, and in this time, you all know that that was a community that, that needed more than just a please, oh, yes, they, they needed a message of understanding in a time where they were pretty, pretty displeased with a lot of things that were happening, not in Dearborn and not Michigan, but certainly overseas, so Sam was fantastic, as were all the AFT faculty members. Right in front of him is President Boza with AFO, who's also very supportive of membership, simply gave time and money to support us. Joanie Morris is the president of, but Angel is a support as well, she's the president of SSA, and she's been a great partner to me generally, but also was supportive of the millage. I don't see Local Seventy-One's president, Joe Zitnick, but I know that they were very, very supportive, and if you're interested in how, I can tell you offline, but they also were there for us. So what's the most exciting about all this is that we put forth a plan that you all endorsed that says, if we can get this millage, if we can continue to draw state and hopefully county funding, then we can see a path to a new building to replace the outdated and sometimes dilapidated K Building, and now we're at that stage. So we've already begun to evaluate ways to take the next step, and the chair of the building and site committee has asked me, that's Vice Chair Pelichkov, has asked me to bring that committee to a meeting. We haven't done that, I don't think, but sometime, we'll be meeting in April, and the board will soon be seeing that we'll be issuing a request for proposals for a design firm that's also known as an architect. We're under new leadership in purchasing, Dan Murray's there, and he was here on board for the last time we did an RSP for a design firm that did the tech building expansion. So we're, Mr. Sadkowski would tell you, I'm pushing pretty hard that we move this pretty fast, and we're hopeful that within the next two months, we can have that RSP either done or close to done with a proposal to you, a design firm, for this, what will be an eighty-five million dollar rocket, a four-story tower in front, front lawn of our campus on Evergreen, a new green space in the center of the campus where we will have outdoor graduations. And my hope is, we'll have selected a design firm pretty quickly, and a construction firm or manager very quickly after, and it, it will be hard, but I am hopeful that we can start actual construction by the beginning of two thousand and twenty-five. I'm pushing John maybe for earlier, but it's an exciting time to be part of the college, and it just simply wouldn't be possible without you trustees seeing what we're doing, endorsing the future we see for the college, and then allowing us to go out to external entities and prove that it's worth it. So it, I will continue to give you updates about that, but, you know, we have a, we have graduation here in May, and it's probably a little too ambitious to think May of twenty-five we're going to have a campus, but by May of twenty-six, we, we should be able to have a graduation. Next month, when I'm here giving you president's update, I'll probably talk more about the graduation we're going to have in May, so, but keep that in the count, it's going to be exciting, and joyous, and happy, and the year. I'll just wrap up and say, thank you, I'll take any questions, and again, for those of you who are worshiping and celebrating Ramadan, I wish you the best of health and contemplation. Any questions, Mr. Chairman? Any questions?
Sure. Next item.
Actually, I have a citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items, which are issued who have submitted a blue card by seven ten PM to the secretary, please be at this time. The board may not be in position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate immediate response to the comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit commas to three minutes. During those three minutes, the comments become personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, or public comment time may be in private. Uh, there are no...
Next.
Next item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or president wish to discuss and vote on separately? There are, we will speak based from the actions below. Recommended action: Move to approve action items one through five as recommended in this agenda.
So, support. The motion's moved by trustee Thorp, supported by trustee Mosib. Are there any questions? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing on, please attaching unanimous vote in affirmative. That's okay, I'm not, I was yours.
Thank you. There are three employees who are not new to the college and not new to you, but they are taking very pivotal roles that are promotions for all three of them, and I asked them to be here, and they were gracious enough to be here. I'm going to ask them to stand and kind of embarrass them by bragging about each of them. I'm not going to ask you to make a speech, but you're welcome to, if you want. I met Anthony Lai, go ahead, stand up, Anthony. I met Anthony Lai when I went to a ten-year anniversary that Dr. Boz, the president of SSA, I'm sorry, the president of AFO, held, and it was, it was a social event, there was food and vibrations and fun, and then, and then there was this group of guys who came up and started playing, and they were playing, you know, my age, I got like eighties, nineties music. They started playing pop eighties and nineties music, and I, I'm not a very good dancer, but, but I just started dancing because the band was so good, and there was this like smooth, long-haired, like silky-voiced guy leading the band, and, and then President Boz was there, and she's, she's like, you know, that guy's an adjunct, and so we talked a little bit, and from then I got to know Anthony a lot more, and as you probably have seen, trustees, he's been slowly making the transition when some longtime faculty members in the music department have retired. He's, as I mentioned earlier, taking on the mantle of running the president's collage concert. You've now brought him on as a music instructor, and he's another example of what... as a music instructor. And he's another example of what President Boza has continually said we need to do, which is build, build the future faculty by the AFO ranks. And, and not all the people you hire, folks, are as cool and talented as Anthony. So, Anthony, I'm glad you're on the team. I have been on the team. I'm glad this board was willing to unanimously vote you. And we'll see you, Anthony, in a minute. Yeah. Next. Yes. Oh, yes.
I just want to say something to Mr. Lai because I've been on the board since 2008. I haven't missed a lodge, I don't think, ever. And unfortunately, this Wednesday, I'm hosting Mayor Opella who moved for my Federation of Neighbor Associations meeting, which conflicts with the, my first collage project. I don't want you to take it personally. Not me in the audience.
We're taking steps to remedy that. Hope you're hesitant to come because 25 hours is not going to be. I told you this was a good hire. Now that I'm hired, Michael, I just want to say that when I was wearing my suit for the interview, I had casual shoes on. It's going to be hard to top this, Jennifer and Karen. All right. So, Karen Sedanowicz is a friend of mine. She's also my teammate. Go ahead and stand up, Karen. So, Karen is taking on a new and improved, not a new and improved, but a promotion. And what you may not know is Karen's one of the hardest working people. And there's a little anecdote about this that shows how, what a great teammate is. You all have promoted her to be the registrar and she's coming off of an interim position, which is, you know, it's a hard thing to do to audition for a job. I can't imagine what it'd feel like if you auditioned for the job and then got told no. But Karen, we thought was a great bet for a yes. And here's one of the reasons. If you want someone who you can trust to work hard on something and be devoted to the mission and also the history of the college, Karen's the right person for you to go to. And here's an example. She came to me once and she, she's, she comes to me and she says essentially, I need your help because some faculty don't put grades in on time. And students complain because they don't get their grades. And sometimes it holds up their graduation. And Russ, I don't want to give you a problem, but I'm hoping maybe you can help. And I don't want to annoy faculty because, you know, putting in grades can be hard. And I told her when I was an adjunct faculty myself, I struggled with getting in grades. And so, I said, well, you know, I don't think that the faculty would be really upset if we worked together and kind of just subtly suggested and then showed them some data. I don't imagine you have that data. And she said, yeah, I do. And I said, she said, but I don't want to get in trouble, so I don't want to use it. She's such a nice person. So, I said, well, okay, can I, can I use it? Yes, you can. So, John McDonald was the president of AFT and Dr. Boza was, and still is the president of AFO. And I went to them and I said, I was actually, I was telling Karen, I, I can guarantee you these faculty, when they get an idea of what's happening to students, they will immediately change their behavior. And they might even be a little surprised about this. And it was basically a naughty list. And God love them, the faculty union heads helped me. And we, Karen and I didn't have to do any knuckle-wrapping and any problems. They just helped us. And that was all because of what Karen quietly, and, and she worked with faculty and continues to have their trust and admiration. But that's an example. I don't, I haven't heard from you that it's a problem anymore.
It's, it's still there. I did, I try to keep everybody off the naughty list. And I do call it the naughty list.
So, here's an example of, you know, just process improvements that, and of course, when Vice President Diamond vacated the role, no one really knew what was going to happen with the department because Vice President Diamond herself was serving in an interim role. And Karen stepped in the breach and in that kind of uncertain future, continued to serve excellently. You probably see her at graduation, she's got 15 balls up in the air that she's fixing. And I'm just so proud that, you know, we're going to, I'm hopeful that promoting her to this position in the full-time capacity will do a lot for all the good things she does, but maybe get her, to retain her because she's a talented person that I would hate to leave, so lose. So, Karen, congratulations and I'm proud of you. So, the last one, Mr., the last one, Mr. Chairman, is a similar feeling of emotion, but a different background. That's Jennifer Markin because she's not been here for decades. Go ahead and stand up, Jennifer. She, but she has, in a very short time with us, basically shown anyone who's worked with her that they can trust her, that she's smart, that she was probably at a position below her skills and leadership talent. I noticed that when she supported the strategic planning group that Dr. Nealan, Rhonda DeLonge, Dr. Gacko did most of the work on. And Jennifer Markin kept constantly kind of keeping me out of the ditch and keeping the hard-working people who are making the really hard decisions, keeping their work at the top of my mind. And so, getting people to rally around her personality and her vision in a kind of comfortable and not aggressive way, which is very, very important, especially when you're trying to rebuild an advising department also. And so, your move today is to take her off of interim status and give her what she deserves, which is the knowledge that she, she now has this time, this position full-time. I hear nothing but good response, responses from one of the biggest groups of people other than students that use advising, and that is the faculty, who historically have been open about the things they wanted to change in advising. And it's, I've just worked with you. I know it's because of the way you treat people and how devoted you are to your work. When people see that you're working that hard and you're devoted and you're honorable and you have integrity to the mission, it's, it's really easy to follow someone like you. I followed you at the strategic planning process. So, to have you get this promotion makes me feel good and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
I said that was the last one, but I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say there's one more that I didn't ask for your action item because it wasn't required. But I did seek all of your feedback about who should run the President's Office. Because for the last six months, we've had someone who was in an interim role also. And what big shoes to fill she had and what a mess person to oversee she's got to deal with. But Patty Flogas has not only done excellent work in this interim role, and it is for, I mean, it really is drinking from a fire hose. But because, and she decided this, and I said you might not want to, but she wanted to also support Holly Diamond's office in Student Affairs where she had vacated. So, she's been playing double duty for almost six months now. And so, it was, it was a really, really happy time for both of us when I told her that at the end of March, when her interim time is up, I'd like for her to stay on in this role permanently. And she accepted. And I'm very excited that she's going to continue to be your liaison to the college as trustees. But anyone who comes to the President's Office knows what a stalwart and what a great advocate Kathy Dimitriou is. And I hope that you'll come to find that my new teammate is just as good. And if, if you ever need anything from me, you, just like Kathy, you'll know that Patty has a better answer than I do. But Patty, you've been good to me and I'm, I'm proud of you and I'm glad you're staying. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And it's after four, it's after 7:43, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, please.
Board of Trustees Business Acknowledgements of Correspondence.
Next item.
Board Committee Reports.
Trustee Moser?
Thank you. The Policy Committee met before this meeting and we reviewed a bunch of policies, ranging from insurance to safekeeping of funds to investment income, health and safety standards, purchasing policy. We discussed it even further. And actually, Trustee Watts and I will take your pulse, all of you trustees, on this policy too. We will also have more discussions on it next meeting. There was also a discussion on the Pregnancy Workers' Fares Act policy. A draft is coming through for that as well. And then, last, we had a discussion on conflict of interest for trustees, a form that we may have to annually fill out. Anything else, Trustee Watts, Trustee McDonald?
I don't believe there's any other reports. No? Okay. Next item, please.
Request for Information and our Future Agenda Items.
Next item.
Board Member Commentary.
Trustee McDonald?
I just want to make a correction on future meeting dates because it's already been posted. It needs to be corrected at a meeting. And the first one says that our next P-12 meeting will be on Monday, April 8. That has been changed, so it needs to be changed in the future meeting dates as well.
Anything else?
A real quick thing about the collage concert too. I have never missed one myself, but I also will not be able to go to Wednesdays. So, good luck and I know it'll be wonderful.
Next item, please.
Future Meeting Dates, Thursday, April 11, 2024, P-12 Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, April 15, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. And Monday, April 15, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.